Good evening. I would like to call the September 28th Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Blatner?
Here.
Ms. Booten?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Ms. Craft.
Here. Mr. Spencer, will you lead us in the fudge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like a motion and a second to suspend the rules in adjourned to workshop setting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booten. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Craft.
Yes. We have one item tonight, the role of FastBridge in learning acceleration and in a balanced assessment system.
Yeah, thank you. And so we have one item tonight, but it really is a pretty important item in terms of, I think accomplishing what I would frame out as building some foundation for our strategic plan. So certainly the topic that we're going to cover tonight in looking at FastBridge, which is an anchor in our assessment program, has a lot of connections to, you know, parts of the plan. So I think the board has heard and kind of foundation for this. There's certainly been question from time to time about, hey, what's the plan to make sure that we're focusing on academics within our strategic plan, right? Portrait of a graduate is framed around academic excellence as center to that. And so what I want to try to pull together for you tonight, so both in your slide deck, up on the screens, there are a couple of visuals that I just want to, I want to frame out to start, and then I'm going to hand it right over to Melissa to go through. So in our Vision 2026 Plan, learning acceleration is a core anchor strategy, right? As we look at how and what kids are learning, as we ensure that kids are learning, both to the level and at the pace that we want them to learn, there are really four kind of key anchors that sit around that concept of learning acceleration. One is, we need to make sure we provide a good, high-quality set of instructional materials and tools. So as the board is aware, you approved the adoption of a new set of core math materials at the elementary level. We're piloting ELA materials. We're piloting middle school math materials. And there is a process to continue to move that pilot across disciplines, especially at the middle school level. So in the K-8 space, over the course of this strategic plan, you're going to be doing a materials review, really, in each of your core discipline areas, plus we're looking at the middle school electives. High school, that course approval and review happens as, kind of on an ongoing basis. You've continued to approve some new courses aligned to pathways. But again, I just come back to, as an anchor, quality instructional resources and tools are essential. Two, we need to make sure we provide the human resource or capital. So both the teachers that actually are delivering that content and the whole bevy or kind of menu of intervention resources. So reading intervention, math intervention, multilingual resource, pace, all of the intervention, right, that sits around that core. Three, we need to make sure that human resource or capital has the data and the information they need to be really targeted and focused in the work that they're doing, right? So we're going to dive into that world tonight specifically in talking about FastBridge. But again, I mentioned that FastBridge is one of several tools that we have that support that work in the district. Certainly, you approved recently a new data warehouse that helps us to kind of aggregate all that information that we have on students and get good visualizations. The state has an assessment suite called IAR that provides some information. And then, of course, our teachers have good classroom assessments, especially with the adoption of the new IM math materials. There are embedded common formative summative assessments at the classroom level that help to support and guide the work of our teachers. But we want to make sure we give them tools to do that work. And then finally, we have to provide the right levels of training and support for our teachers, professional development. And that happens both in designated times for professional development, like last Friday on an institute day. It happens, obviously, when our teachers are together for professional learning community, time that's designated as a part of their work schedule or routine. But it also happens through this job-embedded coaching opportunities. So the board has approved and supported the expansion of math coaches at all of our elementary schools, reading support coaching at our elementary schools. We have math coaches at each of our four middle schools. And we're certainly evaluating ELA reading coaching opportunities at the middle school as well. And again, that is about providing that job-embedded support for teachers to kind of work within, you know, the domains, right? So I share this first, just sort of in this visual, to say, any time you're talking about any of those four quadrants at the board level, you're approving materials, we're talking about professional learning support for our teachers, we're talking about approving staff, human capital, human resource, or we're talking about our dashboard, or any of the tools that sit on our dashboard, we're talking about learning. Right? And you do that all the time, right, within your agenda. And certainly, I hope that we'll continue to prioritize conversations around those areas. Brad, I think in the last meeting, though, asked a really good question, especially when you look at the strategic plan, right? There are lots of strategies embedded in the strategic plan. And certainly, as somebody who's spent a fair amount of time with the team that's around this table, really looking at organizational strategy and development, I certainly know and understand that concept of, like, too many goals is no goals at all, right? You spread yourself too thin, and you lose the ability to really focus it. But the key to not doing that, and what I think you'll see in our strategies, and as we start both this conversation tonight and continue to move forward, is that what we want to do is take those four distinct circles and bring them together, right? So Melissa, you move forward to that next slide, right? As we start to really focus on what are the highest leverage strategies. So IM, we shared when you adopted IM, you weren't just adopting a set of materials. You were also adopting a set of classroom assessments, right? We were purchasing some quality training and opportunity, right? Certainly, within IM, right, there are recommendations for the amount of time that you allocate. And so we increased that instructional math time at the elementary level by 30 minutes and made sure we had the right human capital support, right, in place to do that. And so one strategy that sounds very simple, like adopt a new set of math materials, is really a pretty complex and layered piece. And so seldom are we working on one of those 33 strategies alone in isolation that doesn't have a point of connection to two or three other strategies that are related and ideally are right smack in the middle of that set of concentric circles, right, that gives us kind of the highest leverage focus. So again, tonight, we're going to dive into the assessment element. But feel free, as we're navigating through and sharing some vignettes and some examples to kind of help illustrate what FastBridge is, how it's central to, I think, your strategy, your strategic plan. Feel free to ask questions about any of these other four domains that really are central to the improvement work we do, right? How does FastBridge impact, how does it help us evaluate the impact and the pilot of instructional materials? What types of training and supports do we need to have in place, right, to make sure that teachers, building teams, building administrators can effectively use this? So you're going to go into each of the four domains, and that's okay. And I hope that you'll see the interrelation of it. So with that kind of, I guess, lengthy sort of move into it, I'm going to hand it off to Melissa and let her take you through FastBridge.
Thanks, Dr. Schuler. So I do have five guiding questions for our time together tonight. And so we're going to just start out with this idea of balanced assessment. So when I say the term balanced assessment, this is what I mean. It's a system of assessments that work together to provide a variety of evidence to support educational decision-making. So there's three different assessments that make up that balance of assessments, classroom, interim, and external. So I'm just going to give you an overview of those three. I think it's also important to point out that this is a key strategy on your Vision 2026 strategic plan. It's actually the second strategy listed under academic strategies. And so, and underneath the strategy, we have the tactic to implement effective monitoring and assessment tools to measure progress for academic and social-emotional needs of students. So this year, on the work plans specifically, we have this goal, implement FastBridge in grades K through eight. So that's a key component to our Vision 2026 strategic plan as a part of balanced assessment. So let's dive into what those three components are. So first and foremost, classroom assessments. So these provide our teachers with feedback so that they can modify their instruction on a day-to-day basis and so that they can report progress to our families. So the frequency of this, these are the most often-used assessments in our school district because these are given on a regular basis. So these help our teachers diagnose exactly where learning is, and they can modify their instructional plans to meet student needs. So examples would be the assessments that inform the report card grades, assessments that inform day-to-day teaching, and diagnostic assessments. So Dr. Schuler mentioned IM. So within IM, they do provide assessments that our teachers all commonly use to inform their instruction. And then they use those during their professional learning communities to have conversation about student needs. Interim assessments, these are results that can be meaningfully aggregated and reported at a broader level. So they help us identify the need of students beyond just a tier-one setting. We're going to talk about that term more later on. And interim assessments allow us to measure growth over time. They're usually given three times a year, eight to 12 weeks apart. That's what FastBridge is. FastBridge is an interim assessment. So that's where it fits into that, this category, and we do give that three times a year. External assessments are ones that are used as part of an accountability system. And they are given often one time a year. So I listed several here. IAR, SAT, PSAT, ACCESS, that's the assessment that our multilingual learners take on a yearly basis to assess their proficiency in English language learning. And then DLM, that's the alternative assessment for students with significant cognitive disabilities. So I know Brad asked a question at our last board meeting about comparing FastBridge and IAR. And I feel like this is the spot to do that because we're talking about the difference between an interim assessment and an external assessment. So FastBridge is the interim assessment. It's for reading and math, and we use that three times a year. They're all computer-based items, and they're machine-scored. The results are available immediately after administration. IAR, or the Illinois Readiness of Assessment, that's an external assessment. They assess English language arts and mathematics. And that's a really important distinction. So the English language arts assessment has reading and writing items. And so the IAR assessment is both computer-based, so computer-scored items, and human-scored items because students could be crafting a paragraph or even an essay for math and for the English language arts. This is why it takes us so long to receive those results as well. So, you know, our students take that assessment in April. It could take many months before we actually do receive the final results.
So can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So you get that information in April, which doesn't really inform their teachers much that they can do because they don't get the results. And then the next, when we get those results, it's a new set of teachers, new class, a whole different grade. So from our standpoint, to inform instruction, does it really benefit us, or IAR?
The assessments that benefit us the most would be the interim assessments and the classroom assessments because that's the, those are the students that are sitting in front of you at the time when you get the results.
Can I, Melissa, can I just ask a clarifying question? So again, I come back to the purpose of the assessment, right? So if the purpose of the assessment is to inform instruction for an individual student, right, to understand where a student is and how they've grown, I think the interim assessment, right, much more aligned. There are uses to that kind of system piece. I think one of the things that was mentioned up there is, so when you talk about policy, policy also can, like, look at, like, curricular issues, right? So if you see through IAR points of struggle across a grade level, right, across multiple grade levels, that's a good assessment to inform where might we see gaps in instruction that we're providing, right, to students. So I just want to be careful to say, I don't want to frame IAR as having no use. But when you really are talking about measuring progress and growth of individual students, it has limited function in terms of being able to do that because, again, you're right, cycle is, you assess in the spring, you get the results somewhere around mid to late fall, halfway through the next grade level, and then you're not going to have another set of results for another year, so.
Does IAR also enable us to look at gaps between subgroups?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's an informative one, right?
Yeah, as does FastBridge, right? So again, when you aggregate interim assessment results, you can obviously also look at, you know, subgroup gaps. But my view, and I think as Melissa gets into it, in a cycle that allows you to much more quickly align resources and address the need, right, without waiting a year to have another set of results.
So again, just for, like, if people are, well, let me ask a question. The FastBridge, do we have, is that on the dashboard? Yeah, okay. So that's a tool that we chose as a district to use. And my question, why I'm asking this question is when people are, let's say, looking at, to move somewhere in the western suburbs, and they're looking at the different school districts, and they're looking at the various dashboards and these numbers that are from the IAR and from these interim assessment tools. So we're using FastBridge. Like, how, I guess when somebody's looking at those numbers, and let's say, you know, throw a tennis ball in any five-mile direction here and hit a district, and they're using a different tool. So when someone is looking at that comparison data, it can be, obviously, someone who's a parent now in the district, and they're using a different tool, are they, it's not really apples to apples, is it? And I guess, like, what's the breadth of use of FastBridge, if you know that? I don't even know if you know that in the area.
Yeah, I, yeah, hang on, we'll get to that, right? So you'll get to that as we get into the presentation to understand that, I guess. Susan, though, the broader question is, so every school district that I'm aware of, every district that you compare your results to as a board, has an interim assessment tool that I can guarantee they are using as their primary indicator of performance and guide for instruction. A district may be using a product called NWEA MAP, right? Another very popular interim assessment that lots of districts use. MAP and FastBridge are two different tools. But here's what I will tell you both will produce and kick out, right? They will tell you where is a student performing relative to grade-level expectations and how are they growing over the course of the year, right? Like, a year's growth is a year's growth. Both of those products are going to be built off of the learning continuum that is the common core, right, learning standard. So the learning continuum they're assessing against, I can guarantee you, is the same. And so what I think you could evaluate or find in common is that most districts are probably going to report out, what's our percentage of kids that are performing at grade level? And what does our growth experience look like? And I think you can compare that regardless of the assessment tool itself, right? Because, again, those I just mentioned too, there are others as well. They are all research-based, research-vetted, you know, so as we get into it, I don't want to steal Melissa's thunder, but we didn't write FastBridge, right? It's not our, it's not our product. It is a product that was developed by a company that does assessment and has a whole bevy of assessment gurus and statisticians that have validated the results, right? So while we talk about it as our local assessment, we didn't write it, right? It's not like we've got a group of teachers that came together and said, you know, here's how we're doing it. So it gives us comparative data. But again, back to the comparative, really, the only way to get specific comparative data is you have to use really what's on the Illinois report card. That's going to be the only way you can probably pull out very specific comparative data. But everybody has some version of this interim assessment that they're using.
Okay, thank you. I just know we get some questions sometimes on those numbers. And I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, how that works between, from district to district. Thank you.
One question on IAR. Is this, how long has this one been in place? Because I know we've had different parks, and we've had ISATs, and now we have IAR. And I've heard rumor out there that it might be something three times a year now. And how long have we had this? Because that, I think it's confusing for people as well.
IAR was first administered in 2019, spring of 2019. So before that, it was PARK. Now, you have to remember as well, with IAR, we had some interruption with it because we had the 2020 spring administration that didn't happen. We had 2021 in which it wasn't a full data set because we didn't have, schools didn't have all students in person, so limited participation. So really, there's only two years of data that were similar, 2019 and this last spring. So with regards to what the state is doing moving forward, they did engage in working with the Center for Testing, and they went through a whole process of speaking with multiple stakeholders across the state. I was actually a part of that group. And they made the decision they're not changing the assessment at this present time. It's going to remain to be IAR for now.
Thank you.
Okay, so another key difference between FastBridge and IAR is how the scores are reported. So here's a visual of a score report from, I, sorry, FastBridge. And so you can see here, the scores are reported out by percentile. And so in this particular visual, this is a third grader. The percentile ranks are shown there with the different color coding. So the blue and the green, the orange and the red. And this particular student scored at the 92nd percentile. I mean, they scored better than 92% of students who would have taken that same assessment in third grade. IAR, different scoring. So the state set up five proficiency levels. A four and a five are meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. And a one, two, and three are either did not meet, partially met, or approaching. I think this is also important to the question you just asked, Chris, because when we moved away from PARK and we went to IAR, the state just adopted the exact same scoring and the exact same cut scores that applied to PARK, but it was actually not the exact same test. And so here you see the visualization. You'll see, I'll kind of move you across the visual here. So you see the score range. So, that 750 is the cut of meeting or exceeding. That's that same exact cut that applied to Park. And then, you're going to see the percentage of students at each level. So, that's actually state results sitting there. So, you can see 5% of students exceeding. This is actually a fourth grade example. You can see where that child's score was, and then they have a diamond that indicates the state average. So, two different ways of reporting out scores. Okay, I'm going to move into the second guiding question here. So, what is the FastBridge assessment? So, FastBridge is a suite of assessment tools. It's used for universal screening and progress monitoring. We're going to talk about that a little bit more here in a moment. And it measures students' growth throughout the school year. It has received high levels of reliability and validity as rated by the National Center of Intensive Intervention's Technical Review Committee. It does contain universal screening and progress monitoring tools for reading, math, and behavior. It's aligned to the Common Core. And the Illinois, they adopted the Common Core standards as-is, but they call them the Illinois Learning Standards. So, let's talk about those two terms I mentioned on the last slide. Universal screener and progress monitoring. So, universal screening means that all students at a grade level take that assessment. Progress monitoring is some students take that assessment. So, I'll just let you take a minute and read those two definitions there to yourself. Then we can talk about them more. So, I think just like an easy way to think about this is, you know, when you have young children, you bring them to the doctor yearly, and they take their height and their weight, and they chart that on the graph, and they tell you where your child falls according to national percentile. That's the universal screener. It's like what FastBridge does. But then, FastBridge also has an opportunity that's progress monitoring. So, say, I had a child that fell in like the second percentile for weight. Well, then the doctor would probably put my child on some sort of special diet, and we'd probably continue to go to the doctor and do weight checks. That'd be the progress monitoring part. So, the FastBridge offers both of those. It offers the universal screener, which we're really going to dive into here in a couple of minutes, and it offers the progress monitoring side too. This was a really key decision breaker for us when we were looking at multiple different interim assessments. This was the key reason why we ended up staying with FastBridge and going with FastBridge as our interim assessment, because it really did offer both. So, there's a key term in here I want to dive in to a little bit more deeply. It talks about successful, multi-tiered system of support. So, multi-tiered system of support. You may have also heard this called MTSS before. That's probably a term in education that is often used and you've heard of. So, MTSS is a system of improvement that describes different levels of instruction. So, the data that we collect from FastBridge lets us know what kind of level of instruction students should receive. So, all students receive Tier One. That's essential grade-level learning for all students. Some students need more, and that means that they would get some additional supports for Tier Two. That might be for a short time period. We hope a very small number of students receive what we call a Tier Three intervention. That means they need intense support. So, that's really the difference between those three different tiers and how, we're going to dive into how FastBridge helps us know what kind of support a student needs. So, I'm going to walk through the next couple of slides. I'm going to tell you the types of assessments that our students do take at each of the levels. And so, these are all the universal screening assessments that are given. We're not going to spend time on the progress monitoring ones tonight. We're just going to talk about the universal screeners. So, let's start with reading. So, the first two here are the two that we use to report out on our dashboard. So, the first one is called Early Reading. It's given to our kindergarten students and our first grade students. And it has four subtests, and it measures important reading skills, foundational reading skills. So, letter names, letter sounds, word and sentence reading. And then, we have the other assessment called A-Reading. And you'll see first through eighth grade here. But I want to draw your attention to the asterisks because we're only giving it to our first graders in the spring. So, but, so it's given to our second through eighth graders three times a year. So, with the A-Reading, students complete, it's between 30 and 60 computer-based items that are selected based on a student's graded skill level. It includes questions for all reading levels. And again, both of these are the ones that we report on our dashboard. There's also two other reading assessments. Both of these assess what we call oral reading fluency. We don't report this out on our dashboard, but it's important information for our reading team to have, especially to determine if a student does need intervention in the area of oral reading fluency. So, the first one is called CBM Reading. We give that to our first, second, and third graders. That's given one-on-one. So, students read three one-minute passages. It's a grade-level passage, and we can determine any errors in their fluency. When they enter into fourth grade, it switches over into a computer-based assessment. And so, again, it does the same thing. Reason why it's different, in first, second, and third grade, it's really essential that we listen to students read. That's when they're learning to read. And after third grade, they're reading to learn. And so, it makes sense that we move from that. More time-intensive to the one-on-one assessment, to just them doing that on the computer. Okay, moving into the math space. So, three assessments in the math space. So, we, just like we had early reading, we have early math for our kindergarten, first graders. So, that's three subtests that are given. And in the early reading and the early math space, I think it's important that I mention those are given one-on-one. So, each of those assessments take about a minute, each of those subtests. And then, A-math is given to our second through eighth graders. Again, very similar to the A-Reading. And then, we have CBM Math Automaticity. The first two are the items that are reported on your dashboard. The last one, it isn't reported on the dashboard again, but it's similar to the oral reading fluency. This is helpful for us to know for interventions. So, somebody asked a question about the national usage. I think, Susan, you might have asked the same question about the national usage of FastBridge. So, here's that answer for you. So, this comes straight from the company. They gave me, they gave me information from the 2020-21 school year. So, they administered over 34 million universal screening and 10 million progress monitoring assessments in 48 states. So, millions of students take FastBridge every year. And they say as well that those numbers have even increased since those last counts. It's also interesting to note that they do have a near-wide state implementation, statewide implementation in Kansas and Iowa. FastBridge also updates their norms on a regular basis. So, here I actually have the last time they did the norming study in 2019, in June, that that was published. So, I include some language for you from that report. I think the most important thing to know, that I do think is very impressive, is that they did a match to the demographics of the US student population. So, there's a match to the population of gender, race, ethnicity, the percentage of students receiving free and reduced lunch that are part of that normative study. All right. We're moving along into our next guiding question. So, this is really where we get into the meat of everything. So, how does that assessment support learning acceleration? So, I'm just going to review, what do we mean when we use the term learning acceleration? So, this is about going forward and preparing students for success in what they are currently learning. And we have to remember that Tier One, remember, we just talked about that with our MTSS triangle, that green part of that triangle, that is the primary lever to accelerate student learning. Because if we are not teaching at grade-level standards, we're holding students back. And the gap, that gap's getting bigger and bigger. So, additional supports to students, if they are receiving those additional supports in that Tier Two, that yellow part of the triangle, or that red part, we need to make sure that that is connected to the grade-level learning. So, I always give the same example in this space, but it would be in the math. If students are in a math classroom and they're learning fractions, and they're in an intervention for math, we don't want them off learning about geometry at the same time. We want them connected to the same unit of study, contextualized within their own grade level. This slide right here comes straight from a presentation that I gave to EC12 right when we came back at the beginning of the year, and continue to use this slide because these are the four core actions that we are taking to accelerate learning. So, the first two, we've talked about quite a bit recently at our board meetings, where adopting the high-quality instructional materials and also providing the professional learning for our staff so that they can implement the materials in a Tier One setting. Three or four are what we're talking about tonight. We need to utilize assessments to prioritize learning. And those are those three types of assessments that I talked to you about at the beginning of this presentation. And we need to focus our intervention on our students' most in need. And we need to make sure there's instructional coherence. So, once again, we want to make sure it's connected to what they're learning in the classroom. This quote right here, this comes from a group that we've used quite a bit. It's the Instruction Partners. They put out really outstanding guidance for folks that sit in my job in terms of how to best implement new instructional materials, or how to implement high-quality professional learning, or how to best address unfinished learning. That's a report they put out this past spring. It was called Addressing Unfinished Learning. And I thought it was so fitting to put this into this presentation because I think it summarizes so much of what we're doing here in District 200 from the idea of balanced assessment and learning acceleration. So, I'm just going to let you read that quote, and then I'm going to pull out a few key items from it. Okay. So, here are the items I highlighted. One, ensure all students have access to grade-level content. We've been talking about that for two years here with accelerating learning. And so, I just want to highlight that once again. Next, minimize the time spent on assessments and maximize the direct instructional time to fill those gaps. One of the things about FastBridge that we did like is it's a valid and reliable test, but the time to take that test was different than some of the other products we were looking at. It wasn't as long to get a, to get a good score. So, I do want to point that out. That was a big decision-maker for us as well. And then, the last part is really the crux of all of this. Target assessments, so they reveal actionable information and can provide just-in-time supports. So, FastBridge, we're going to dive into some of the information here. That helps us understand where students are and what level of additional support they need. Our classroom assessments, once again, are a really important part of this conversation. That tells us every single day what we need to take action on.
Melissa, as you're going through this, can you share or bring context on what a teacher does with the data? So, you know, they get the report, so what? Now, what do they do with it, right? So, not right now, but as you're going through it, I would love to have that context.
Yes. We will definitely hit that. Thank you. So, this just explains the normative data. That's the data that we use, and we're going to dive into what that looks like specifically. But that's valuable because it helps us compare students, other students nationally, who are taking the same assessment. So, when we are looking at the normative data, it falls into four different categories. So, first is that blue color. Those are students that perform at the 85th percent, national percentile, or higher. Students that score in that range are likely to need enrichment opportunities. That green band, that's a pretty wide band right there. It's the 30th to the 84th percentile. Students in that range, that is where a majority of our students are scoring, but this is also where their experiences, they should be able to experience success with core instruction. Students in that orange band may need some additional support. Students in that red band, they need intensive support. So, this right here shows you exactly what the data reports look like. So, there's a lot of information on this slide. Let me walk you through it. In the middle, you see a screenshot of exactly what it looks like when our staff log into FastBridge. So, this is actually a screenshot from this last spring. And you, this is from second grade. And you can see the fall scores, the winter, and the spring. So, the number that sits above those columns, that indicates the percentage of students that scored at the 50th percentile or higher. And that's a really important number because FastBridge tells us if students score at the 50th percentile or higher, they are likely to be very successful in grade-level learning. That's an important number to us because it tells us, that's our goal for students to have long-term academic success. That's the results that we use on our Vision 2026 dashboard. So, you can see the numbers across the top of the column, the 62%, the 70%, and then the 73%. We also use the same report to look at data from this idea of MTSS. So, if students are scoring in the blue and the green, that is telling us that the students that are going to be successful within that Tier One environment and core instruction, and they don't need any other extra interventions. So, in this specific case, 87% of those second graders are scoring in a blue or green range, so.
Melissa, though, can you, maybe you're getting to this, you're kind of getting to that cusp piece here on this next slide?
Yes, 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 thank you. So, this is a slide that we have shown multiple times. In fact, I was in Mrs. Bednar's office this week. She had this exact slide printed off, sitting on her desk, because she's been working with her staff. So, there are three reports we ask our staff to look at to help inform their knowledge of their students. So, that first visualization, we need to know which of our students are scoring at or above the 50th percentile. So, that green range is wide, right? We actually wish that FastBridge had the visualization, a dark green and a light green, because there is a difference between a student who's scoring at the 31st percentile and a student who is scoring at the 83rd percentile. That's a big difference in skills and abilities. And so, if a student is in that green range but below that black line, that's what Dr. Schiller is referring to, is this idea of a cusp student. We know that they're learning with. We know that they're learning within our classroom. They're not being pulled out for an intervention. But as a teacher, I know I have to provide them more support and I have to do something a little bit different. So it means, you know, I'm giving a task or an assignment in the classroom. I'm really checking in with those students right away and listening in with those students or, you know, I'm really checking in closely with their work to make sure they're, they're successful. I'm providing scaffolds and supports to make sure that they can access the grade level learning. Anything else?
No, I was going to say, is it, is it possible as well that perhaps a cusp student, if there's a specialist doing some push-in support in a classroom, from time to time, a cusp student might kind of get pulled into that intervention with either a multilingual teacher with a reading, with a math teacher?
Absolutely, absolutely. Especially, you know, if you're looking at a classroom assessment that you gave that day and, or the day before and they were unsuccessful. You might say, I really have to do some like reteaching or assistance for that, that group of students.
So can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
I made an adopted school visit to Pleasant Hill two weeks ago, a week, a couple of Fridays ago. And they were doing their math collaboration in small groups. And I noticed, I've run into like six or seven rooms. Every room, the teacher seemed to be focusing on a couple, a couple of groups and there were, there were other assistants in there. Might that be focused on where that green line, that dark line is?
Absolutely.
They knew who those students were and put them together so that?
Absolutely. And we're going to go into this more when we give some more examples. But when our, our staff are looking at these reports, they're really identifying student by name and by face, you know, where they're at. And that helps guide daily decisions that they're making in their classrooms. So that's a really good example of exactly what that teacher was doing. Okay, so that's that first visualization. In the middle, that's at, this is the idea of MTSS right here. So this is really important to know, the percentage of students that fall in that green and that blue. It's important for us to know, if I, if I were a principal in a building, this is a really important piece of information for me to know. Because if the percentage in the green and the blue falls under 80%, it means that we have to support the core instruction. We have to make sure we are in that classroom and we are supporting core instruction because there's probably a lot of need in that classroom and they can't just all come out. We need to support them within the room too. The last visualization is about growth. And what FastBridge says is if a student scores in these categories that qualify as typical or aggressive growth, they're making at least one year's worth of growth. And so that's another data piece that we are looking at. We don't have that piece right now because we're looking, once our students take the assessment in the winter, we'll have from fall to winter growth and then we'll have winter to spring. But we can also look at from fall to spring as well. That actually sits on your dashboard as well. Remember, we'll be reporting out the percentage of our students that meet this typical and aggressive growth, which equals one year's worth of growth.
Okay, a quick question just about the dashboard. And it goes along with this and then the, the other assessments that are done three times a year. So does, will the dashboard be updated each time one of those assessments are given? You know, or something like this, or is that only updated once a year? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. Yeah, only once a year. So you're gonna, you're, the dashboard, we're going to update with the spring assessment. Because the spring assessment is where we're really determining who's performing at grade level, like what percentage of students are performing at grade level and what percentage of students were in either the typical or aggressive growth track, right? Meaning they're making at least a year of growth. And, and again, just an important piece to, to understand in, in monitoring both, right? If a student is in blue, right, they start the year in blue, we still want them making a year's worth of growth, right? Like we don't want to ignore the student, not provide a, a good quality enriched experience so that they're, they're still growing. So the, the, you know, as we report those two data points, they may not necessarily correlate, right? So if 80% of our students are at grade level and 80% of our students are making a year's worth of growth, that's not necessarily the same. That's why we're monitoring both because we want to know and understand that while ideally our, our goal is to bring up students that are in the, the red and the orange band, we also want to be really cognizant that in the process of doing that and devoting resources toward doing that, that we're not losing sight of students that are already performing above grade level and, and yet not continuing to make growth, right? Because if they don't make a year's worth of growth, at some point, they're going to shift from blue to green. At some point, they're going to shift from above that black line to below that black line, which sort of puts them in the cusp category and eventually, you know, potentially puts them below grade level material. Does that make sense? So, but that's why we're doing that at the, at the spring, right? Because that's really the, kind of your, your cutoff point in time.
A question. I'm sorry. So how, how does the testing tool itself capture that growth of the higher level student? Does that make sense? So if, if a student's scoring in the 85% above, above for grade norm, when they take their second and third assessment, it's all the same test for every student. So how are they capturing that? If, if a student is already achieving grade level work, is?
Go ahead. It's an adaptive assessment.
So it is, so it's adaptive to each student?
Yes. And when the student takes the test in the fall, it will set a projected score for them for the?
For a year of growth? Okay.
Exactly.
That helps. Thank you.
And then I do want to just point out with regards to your dashboard, the two items that sit on your dashboard are the first visualization and the last visualization. The middle visualization is really internal for us to determine how we're providing levels of support for students.
I just had a quick question on the dashboard, on the indicators for growth. Are we reporting, when, when do we expect to report that? Would it be in the spring as well? Okay. And then I know the reporting for K through one is not going to be until October 2023. So would it be spring of 2023 that we would see those growth numbers for the K through one?
And that does not mean, so I guess board level understand that certainly we can bring updates and information on the performance of students. But just on the public dashboard, I want to, I want to get into a regular cadence. I think the other thing, I may have asked a question before, that, that will allow you a common point of comparison as well. If you look at what will be your spring results on FastBridge compared to what you'll get in October, which would be the previous year's results on state, you'll be able to compare IAR and FastBridge for the common point in time, right? That is, that would be, you know, performance of students. Although IAR is a little bit earlier in the year. It's not quite as, as close to the end of the year as the, the FastBridge piece will be. But at least you'll be, it's not an apples to apples comparison, but you're comparing the same group of students that got tested in that administration.
So we got to walk before we run with all this, with all this stuff. If I think about kind of more advanced analytics, the concept, right? I think about the career of a student as we get more data, right? And so, you know, let's say grades K to two, there, you know, we see growth levels that are above average, right? We see three or four starts to level out as an indicator of there might be something going on. So does it have that capability?
Yes. Yeah. In fact, right now, because we, we've been piloting this. So we have five sets of data that we can look at. So we're able to pull up, launch totally, I showed you the one visualization that had the fall, winter, spring. We can actually pull up a visualization right now that has five of those bars. Yeah.
Yeah, just, I think about a progression over the course of a career and how that matters as an indicator of other things that are going on, not just academic, I think social emotional impact, right?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I think you're, you're getting, I'm going to jump, jump ahead right to the piece. But again, so this becomes important in terms of being able to help us track individual progress of students, but also look at the system. So when you look at that middle visualization that Melissa's talking about, right? That provides critical information for the teaching and learning department to understand at what grade levels do we have problems?
Yeah, right.
Right? It may not just be about supporting individual students, but saying what's happening at that grade level? Are we not implementing IM with the same level of fidelity that we need to be implementing that curriculum resource? Do, you know, is that the, the place where we're going to ask buildings to prioritize getting a math and a reading coach in classrooms to provide additional, you know, support for how, you know, how you, how you scaffold, you know, it, it up. And, you know, I think sort of that early report is, is, is kind of already showing us like grade levels where, you know, we've got points to watch that I also don't think are necessarily like curriculum related. But I think we're starting to see a pretty clear pattern emerge related to the, to the pandemic, right? There, there is a clear focus. It's our second graders that I think are at a struggle point right now largely because they weren't even in our school system at the beginning of the pandemic. But I think a lot of them missed early learning opportunities and, and then came, came into kindergarten experience. It was a little different. Well, you know, certainly for us, they had the opportunity to be in person for, you know, their, their kindergarten experience. It's still, I, I, we're starting to see that shake out. That's a grade level we're going to need to really boost and, and support.
And follow through the group.
To see that we're not just seeing typical group, you know, growth, but hopefully seeing typical accelerated, you know, growth for that group of students.
In fact, I'll add on to that. So that's like translates very tangibly to like Friday. I meet every Friday with reading coaches in here. That's part of our conversation on Friday. And what are the interventions we're looking at to help and support that second grade group with what we're seeing as a need? So.
So Melissa, just to clarify for, for anybody who's listening, this is, this is a great, like, three-point time, kind of during the year. But we're, teachers are still doing some form of a formative assessment so that we're not waiting till we see this to see that somebody's in a blue band to maybe differentiate.
Exactly. So like, in fact, I pulled right here, like I have right here, some of the illustrative math, like the IM assessments right here. So you see, you know, exactly our teachers have that information in all of our other courses as well, right? They have their classroom assessments that inform their day-to-day teaching. Okay, question four. How does FastBridge data inform the ongoing cycle of instructional improvement? So Rob, this actually is really when we're going to get into the question that you asked. So our students take the assessment three times a year and we utilize a system to help us have instructional improvement. It's the same cycle after every administration. So I'm going to dive into each part of this cycle. So here you'll see the dates for those administration windows. So we're going to come up on the winter window and that'll close right before winter break. And then at the end of the year, we have the spring testing window. So after our students take that assessment, what we do is we analyze and interpret the data. So we do that analysis really in two spaces. First, we do it at a district level. So that happens as an SLT team, that happens with my directors, that happens with our principals, that happens with our teacher leaders. Then our building level leadership does that same exercise. They do that with their classroom teachers. So after they've analyzed the data, then they establish goals and they create action plans. So that, again, we have action plans that sit at a district level. You just really heard about one of them where we were talking about second grade, a trend we're noticing across the district. We want to help and support and work together as a team on that. Of course, our building creates action plans and then classroom level creates action plans. So Dr. Salagi has a great example of this.
Yeah, I think, I get a, obviously, in my role, I supervise our elementary principals. So I get an opportunity in supervisory role to see this work in action. And one of the things that we've made a really clear expectation from, from our perspective and to our principals is that this information needs to be worked at, at the classroom and teacher level, right? So we talked about the benefits of it at the district level, some of the things that we can look at to make decisions. But how does this really get down to the classroom teacher, teacher? What does this mean for the classroom teacher? So I'm just going to give a few examples of some of my observations that I've seen this year with, with our principals and some of our teams. On the first, on the, on the right side there, you see a classroom screener report. This is actually something that was created actually by one of our principals and now is being used by our principals to get data really clearly into teachers' hands. So in my example, I was at Washington observing their data meeting. And in their data meeting, it was actually a fourth grade team. You had all their classroom teachers together. The principal was helping to lead the meeting. You had your reading specialists, reading coaches, math specialist, math coach, psychologist in the room as well. And this is just a sampling of questions that were being reflected upon and action planned upon. First step was for each classroom teacher, there were student names underneath each one of those percentiles, right? So that there was a clear visibility for the teachers to know where were the, where were their students going out in both reading and math from a national percentile rank, right? And then there were certainly questions being answered. Now, this data meeting is only about an hour, right? That's why there's specialists in the room too. So can we action plan within the meeting? But also when we leave, do we need to do some work as well? One of the questions they were asking, first of all, was, all right, have you looked at our class rosters and our students listed at the 85, 85th percentile or above? One, are these students already in the PACE program? And two, if they're not, that's okay, but what are we doing to enrich and stretch them, right? Are we looking at our center time in the IM math block? Now, that's 90 minutes. What are we doing there? What are we doing in the reading space? What are, what type of tasks are we giving those students that have a deeper level of knowledge, right? Some teachers were already saying, oh yeah, I know that I'm already doing with this. One teacher, one teacher said to the reading specialist, I need help with this. So there was like an action planning piece having there first, right? The other piece that we've talked a little bit about, but to bring you back to and a really key question is that idea of a cusp student or a student that might be in the 30th to 49th percentile, right? So we know that these students should be able to be supported within the classroom, grade level curriculum in, in the classroom at the tier one level. However, we've got to closely monitor them, right? So you'll even see on the form there, it should say, using the same report, indicate the number of students in the green under the 50th percentile. So that's the, the bottom area that we want to be really targeted. So every classroom teacher is being very clear about what they're recognizing and how they're moving forward there. And remember, this is just one data point to say, let's look at our classroom assessments now to say, what, where is there a skill deficit, where are they strong? So it allows them to look a little bit deeply. This is still only one piece of data, but a powerful piece of data. The last piece that I'll, that I'll add in my observation and then put the reflective question up here. This was a fourth grade group that I was watching at Washington. And as they were going through it, they were talking about their students who were in the 0 to 19 percentile. And obviously, the first question you're asking is, are they already receiving intensive intervention? You know, the answer to that question should be yes, right? So whether that's with the reading specialist, math specialist, potential special education plan, you know? But it's also, those are our classroom teachers, students as well. So it's also, what are we doing in the classroom for that? And the, the reading specialist said, you know, your students that are scoring in the, in the red or the 0 to 19th percentile, and this was a fourth grade classroom, when you are doing differentiated guided reading groups, it needs to be targeted and skill focused. It shouldn't just be by their level. But really what this is telling us is that they need direct phonics instruction in a small group. Now, that might've been only for a small group of students. But right in that moment, what I saw was instructional decision that was made. And then the reading teacher followed up by saying, do you, do you have the materials to do that? Do you understand where it's at? Do you need further assessments? Two teachers said, app, I'm already on that. I've been working with you. Another teacher and the reading specialist said, let's touch base outside of here, right? So you can kind of see how, how one piece of data can lead you to a few different things and brought to the classroom level. And this is in addition to the team looking at it from a holistic perspective. What is our grade level doing in, in a few pieces? So again, just wanted to give you a picture or a glimpse into like a building level, data meeting, how we get it done at the classroom level. Certainly at the winter meetings, there'll, there'll be a growth piece. They'll be looking at that as well, right? And seeing who's growing and who's projecting, so.
I feel like Dr. Schiller, you saw this in action as well at a building.
Yeah, so I. Yeah, so I likewise, this, this year I have set in my calendar two half days every week, every Wednesday and every Thursday. I set a half a day aside to go to a, a building and just one building for that concentrated block of time. And I think a couple of weeks ago, I was at Lincoln for building visit and I happened to get there in the morning and, and actually sat in on an entire meeting with their full second grade team and their reading department. Same thing. They were going student by student, right? Really looking at, at results and, and the discussions that they were having really centered around, one, making sure that, that they had good information on every student that they supported. So they were talking about some students who were struggling in the classroom, but actually did well on this assessment and really trying to make sure that they had a good grasp on that. Conversely, they had some, some students that did not do well on the assessment, but actually doing really well in the classroom. And so having that level of conversation. And then they really got into two things that I thought were really interesting nuanced conversations. One, they were looking at a grade level at, where do we prioritize starting in terms of intervention? So they had a great discussion on the fact that they had a small group of kids that were kind of cusp kids, probably just needed a little boost to get, you know, kind of right where they needed to be. And really having a thoughtful discussion on, are we best to do that right away? Get, get kind of those students the boost and then pour all of our resources into some of the more intense intervention needs. And then they were also evaluating. So because that was a grade level, that, that was kind of a, of a focus of that conversation, the, the reading supports were not only seeing kids individually, but were pushing into the classroom to support students inside of that instructional experience. So just, just a really rich, robust discussion that was very kind of individually student focused, yet, you know, really kind of had this, the broader context to how do they make the best use of the, the resource they have to really prioritize learning and intervention where it needs to be.
A hair off topic, but tangential. Do new teachers come in understanding this process? Do we have to teach it? Are they prepared? Are they, are they prepared at the collegiate level? I'm just kind of curious what you see. Without being too critical of, you know, college academics. But I'm just curious, right?
I, I think.
The process, not FastBridge, but the, the concept, right? I think it's really interesting.
Yeah. No, I, I think it's something that we probably have to support them with. I think this would be, I'm speculating. So anyone else could probably chime into this conversation. I think you learn these things when you're actually a part of a school in a system.
Right, a team.
Yes. And so if they had a great student teaching experience, I bet they, they come in.
Oh, right.
Seeing that or had those skills. But I think it's really hard to theorize this in a classroom university setting. You probably have to be within the school setting.
We, we do hire a lot of our student teachers.
Right.
And so I can guarantee you the student teachers that have had their experience. So, you know, Lincoln, I mentioned Lincoln. They have four student teachers right now, right? So I can guarantee you those four student teachers have a pretty good solid understanding of, of assessment. And I, and I guess last thing I would say is I, I would venture to guess that most of our, not most, all of our principals are asking those questions in an interview to understand how a teacher sees assessment. And, and, you know, they're, they're probably not going to hire, not at the elementary level, certainly or, you know, middle school level. I mean, we, we still have a, a pretty good candidate pool for elementary classroom teachers that I think you can, you can still be pretty focused and selective on who you bring in.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Chris, what do you, you have a?
Yeah, no, I would agree with all that. I always just say the final piece of that is, if you think about the things that we've shown today, so Melissa showed you assessments from IM, right?
Yeah.
Those are assessment, probably end of unit assessments or mid-unit assessments that every classroom teacher has available to them. They're in a professional learning community, so they should be giving them along a probably a common timeline. We have an assessment, a system here which is complex, but when you boil it down, our college graduates can understand national percentiles and things like that. So it is also incumbent upon us in our leadership and our materials adoption, all those pieces, to have some of the resources provided. And so when you have a system, kind of like we outlined in talking about interim assessments, the classroom assessments are provided by there. It, it makes, I guess it makes it simpler to work with as well. So I think it's that balance. And if they can, if they understand that concept too, I think.
And I, and I'm going to add on to what you're saying right here because I think that's why the coach position is so incredibly important. So for example, with the situation you were just saying in like the IM assessments, our coaches are so critically important, not just to our new teachers, but to all of our teachers with that assessment and making sure they're supporting our staff. And like, okay, let's look at this assessment as a whole and how can we use the information from the assessment to help guide what we're doing in our classroom as well? So they play such an important role in helping our teachers navigate this assessment system.
Well, I can't ask a piece tied to all of it. So I mentioned the building visits. I've really prioritized on building visits, getting into math classrooms, right? Seeing the, the math experience. And so Friday at our institute day for our elementary staff the morning was really focused on math, right? Focused on, on IM. And so the, the math, math coaches asked if, if I would, we can do a little like video introduction for our elementary teachers, just sharing some of the observations that, that I've seen. And I, I will say, so back to what, what Chris was just saying, I can go from one building on Wednesday to a completely different building on Thursday. And I can guarantee if I go in a fourth grade classroom at both schools, I'm going to see a very similar, common, high quality experience. Like in most cases, I'll see kids at that other building doing the same exploration that students were just doing. And, and so for me as a system, while I know that, you know, and Chris taught in the, in the district for a long time and those, there was kind of a, there was a history of autonomy, right? For, for teachers. And it's important for teachers to feel, right? That, that they have control points in their classroom. Nobody wants to be told you have a scripted day or a scripted lesson and you can't, you can't deviate from that. But for me, and I think probably for, for you as a, as a governing board, I want to make sure that a fourth grade math experience is a fourth grade math experience, right? Shouldn't that matter which of the thirteen elementary schools that you're at, you know, if, if a student happens to transfer tomorrow from Sandberg to Bauer, they ought to be prepared to go into a fourth grade classroom and continue their learning without being like totally on a different sort of piece. And, and I, I see that much stronger than I have ever seen it, at least in the nine years in the district, right? There is just a very similar high quality experience as you move across classrooms.
Yeah, we had it where it wasn't even within the same grade level in the same building. We're doing different units at different times because people just had their way of wanting to teach them.
So to Dr. Schiller's point, we had a story at math, middle school math coach meeting. And remember, we have the pilot happening right now. But the two, the student transferred from one school to another school, two pilot classrooms. Those teachers were able to connect really quickly and it was just seamless. And they, they told that story of how great that was, so.
I have a question on the data meetings that you were talking about. I, I love this really data driven approach so that you can have the targeted learning. How often do those meetings take place where you have this cross collaboration between the coaches and psychologists and all that? Is it just three times a year after the FastBridge assessment? Or because there's so much other common instruction, classroom assessments, are they taking place more regularly?
Yeah, the data meetings that I was referring to are three times a year. However, so, you know, the process I was alluding to is three times a year. But then we have our professional learning communities, which are grade level teams, which our specialists, like coaches and psychologists are involved in as well. And those are meeting weekly to bi-weekly, right? So those are the teams. And they're, they're probably looking more at classroom assessments, but some of this information is driving it. And then a piece we haven't touched a lot on, I know it's not a part of the presentation, the progress monitoring piece. For some of our more intensive students that are need, those teams are meeting weekly because sometimes there's students with special education plans or getting intensive services. So the broader process, three times a year. But then you've got other systems that can be a little bit more closely monitored. But I just really depend on what students, grade levels, and the assessments.
Okay, so I actually pulled, this is a screenshot. So within the FastBridge system, we can, we can continue to dive into deeper levels of reporting to give us even more specific information. So this is one of the reports. So this is a really great tangible example to the story Chris told about the fourth grade classroom and how there were students that needed some intensive interventions. Well, sometimes within a whole classroom, there's a need for common supports. So this is an example actually from a second grade classroom. And it says, whole group recommendation, phonemic awareness and phonics. So it's saying within that second grade classroom, there's a really strong need for spending more time on phonics and phonemic awareness and to make sure students are getting exactly where their level of that need is. So that's a really powerful piece for this tool. It aggregates that and gives us that. We don't have to dig through and figure that out ourselves.
So I didn't follow how that left box, so the system generates that, is right?
Yes.
But what is it saying?
Yeah, do you see where it says whole group recommendation?
Right.
And it says phonemic awareness and phonics.
Right.
So this, what this is saying is this classroom, there's so much, there, the whole class needs more support in this.
Got it, got it.
Sometimes that report, many, many, many times, that report says on track, continue your fourth grade instruction. But this, in this case, this is saying, we have a lot of kids within one classroom that really need something specific here. This would be a specific case where we would make sure a coach is in that classroom in that core instruction time to really help and support. So I want to just highlight that the power of having a tool like this is, is great because there's so many layers of reports that can help a teacher in the conversations like Dr. Salagi talked about. Thanks for asking that clarifying question.
Sure.
So, all right. So after we've come up with our plans, we want to implement them and we want to evaluate the effectiveness. So we create action plans. Our students that have intense interventions, they need progress monitoring. We use our classroom assessments on an ongoing pace basis. And then we continue to monitor the achievement between administration and the growth results. So the growth results are going to be really key after the winter and after the spring administrations. That's going to be another key piece of data. Okay, so we're at our last guiding question. So how can all stakeholders then use the assessment data to inform their learning? So Board of Education, you have two policies that are directly related to assessment and testing. First is school accountability. Board continuously monitors student achievement and the quality of the district's work. So this is that annual meeting that we have where I present the data that sits on the dashboard and the school report card. This generally happens in October. So this year it will be at the October committee of the whole meeting. But as well, you have your dashboard. So that gives the community a report on the student achievement. You also have your board policy that's directly related to testing and assessment. So we have to have a testing and assessment program. And so we utilize FastBridge as our interim assessment. Of course, we administer the state required assessments as well. At an administrative level, we use dat, FastBridge data in many ways, I've highlighted the top five. We monitor the achievement and growth and that is from the district level to the school level, to the classroom level, to the student level. We utilize data decision making to drive our improvement efforts. We determine the effectiveness of curriculum instruction. I think we've talked about that a few times tonight. We identify and design services for students and we monitor the progress of our goals at a district level, at a school level, our efforts for improvement and our, and the instructional priorities we need to have. Here are some of the ways that our teaching staff use that. They have to identify students who are responding well to the core general ed instruction. They need to identify the students who need intensive or supplemental interventions. They need to continue to make informed decisions about those interventions throughout the year. And then they also have to utilize their classroom assessments to inform their daily instruction. So we can't just have FastBridge and wipe our hands and teach for five months. We need to continue to assess our students and make sure they're meeting the goals that we have for them. And then for our care givers, there's really three core questions that families should ask about their students' results. One, how is my child doing? Two, how is my child doing in comparison to peers nationwide? That's, they're going to get that data because they have national percentiles. And then three, how have my students' scores changed over time? So this information is going to be uploaded into Synergy. There's a little tab that says test results. So parents are going to, we're going to open that up. Parents are going to be able to click on that test results and they're going to be able to see their students' results, their net, how they have scored. The national percentile score will sit there. Now, we're also, Julia Zmikowski, who is our data guru, she's going to prepare a letter that will go with that, that our principals will email out. That letter will explain what the test is and how to interpret the results.
Let me ask, what does that look like for the, the school and the teacher and principals? Because when those scores go out, I'm guessing there's going to be a lot of questions about it and stuff. And I guess what does that support look like as far as the load on the teachers and the principals at the building when that goes out?
So are you, I can answer, do you want to know how we're supporting them to be prepared for that?
Yeah, I guess I just feel like there's going to be, and maybe that will wane over time as parents get used to this data, what, and what it means and how to read it and everything. But I guess I just, it just seems like that's going to be a big, you know, maybe, you know, of emails to the teachers and the principals and just time, you know, of having to explain that, like almost having like a little parent teacher conference with every parent, you know, or not every, but alike. You know what I mean? I just feel like, I guess I just want to make sure there's support there when those scores go out.
Yeah, so, and I mean, so clearly our principals have been supporting our teachers and understanding because this is new for our teachers too, remember? And Julia Zmikowski, she's fantastic at making screencasts that provide some sort of, you know, tutorial for our staff. So she's in the process of doing that right now. She is actually working with a group of teachers, getting feedback on it to make sure that it encompasses everything that they need to be able to navigate any, you know, questions that may arise, so.
Susan, I think it's a, it's a fair question, but those are the conversations that should be happening, right? I mean, that, that's the conversation we want to happen, obviously as parent and, and teacher to understand, you know, not just, and I guess I, I think Chris asked this question earlier, right? Like we need to be careful. I think this is a, this is a great tool. I think this is a, this is a great tool that gives us a lot of information. I don't want to over-index on one assessment tool. This is not the end-all-be-all that defines a student as a, as a learner, and we don't want to lose sight of that, right? So I think as, as teachers do, right, first, as you look at the conversation, put it in context of what else do we know about, you know, does this test result, is it consistent with what teacher sees in the classroom in terms of successes or challenges with, with learning? But I, teachers do that, that's what they do, right? I mean, they do do that.
Oh, yeah, I know, I just think it could be like an influence.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah. Yeah, one, one point at a time.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, so I'm just kind of like rounding everything out. There are a lot of information tonight. So we really walked through these five guiding questions. We talked about what a balanced assessment system is, which is on your Vision 2026 strategic plan. We walked through just what FastBridge is, how we use it to support our key strategy of learning acceleration. We talked about how we have that ongoing cycle for instructional improvement that's based on utilizing the FastBridge data, and then we talked about how stakeholders can all use this. So once again, just pointing out, this is like key to your Vision 2026, and just like two key terms here. So we talked about what balanced assessment is. So balanced assessment gives us the information that we need to do learning acceleration. Learning acceleration is the strategy that we apply to the information that we get. And again, the most important part is making sure that our students get high-quality, tier-one core instruction, and then we need to provide interventions based on a developed need. And I, last slide here, just, these are the things that we are working on that are directly related to accelerating learning, and I hope you see tonight, we really, we talked about all four of those at one point in time. We talked about how influential those high-quality instructional materials that you adopted have been in our classrooms. We talked about how important the coaches are to helping our staff understand, like the needs that they're seeing in assessments, but also helping support them deliver that instruction. We talked about how important this piece of data is with FastBridge, what that regular classroom data is, and then we talked about how we identify our students for interventions and how we want to make sure we're doing exactly what they need so that they can meet that grade level of learning. So that's, that's the end of this slide.
Questions or comments for Mrs. De?
I have a few. Do we have an interim assessment tool for FastBridge?
Yeah, we had our local assessments.
Okay.
That we gave three times a year in K-8 and reading and math.
The national standard, how often is that updated?
FastBridge says that they do it every five years.
Five years.
They do their norming study every five years.
So our, when we're ranking where we are?
Mm-hmm. That's based on the norms that are set in the norming study.
Okay.
And then we will report out how our students perform on a yearly basis in the spring.
The, what, for other subjects, science, social studies, do we only have classroom assessments?
Yes, but, I mean, in science, there is a state assessment that's given at certain grade levels.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, because this is really good in terms of the focus that it puts, especially on those needing help. Is there learnings from here that even without a FastBridge can be applied to some of the other classes?
Yeah, so.
I know that's easier said than done, but.
Well, actually, I can give you a very tangible example of that. So last week, we had all of our middle school principals in here along with our math coaches, and we were doing a data dive of the FastBridge data. And we identified some needs in the area of reading, and it was actually one principal mentioned, they wanted to make sure that this data was in front of their social studies staff and their science staff so that they understand, they understood, like, certain students might need more support with those texts because their reading levels demonstrated that they would probably need extra support, so.
Okay, then, when you talk about the universal screening for reading, and it talks about the, questions are selected based on the student's grade and skill level?
Mm-hmm.
How many skill levels are there?
It ranges across the grade levels from primary all the way up to grade 12. So there's skills that span that whole, that are related to everyone of those grade levels.
Right, but so if you're looking at fourth grade reading, the skill levels, there could be like three to eight, or I'm just giving a rough idea.
So here's what.
Because you're going to categorize the kids.
Hey Melissa, can I, I think I can clarify a little bit, maybe, what you're asking. So by skill level, we're not saying like at fourth grade, there are four different performance skill levels. You're talking about specific reading skills, like there's a, a skill of phonemic awareness, right? It's the development of a student mastering, right? That, that's the, it's the progression on that skill level, not necessarily, like, are you doing first, does that make, does that help? So there's not like a set number, it's, it is a, one consistent set of progressions on the reading skills that you want students to master.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it gives me ideas. Because it says it bases the question based on grade and skill level, right?
Yeah, it does.
So if you guys are both, you're going to get different questions than Diana if you're sitting next to each other in class.
You can get different questions that are going to assess where you are on that singular skill progression that runs across those grade levels.
Okay.
This also ties to, I think, Angela, you'd asked a question before as well about, like, like reading, guided reading groups, or, you know, leveled reading groups. So, you know, sort of the point of connection that, that I'm making is that, you know, Melissa spent the afternoon on, on Friday as well, working with elementary teachers on like, ELA reading shifts, right? What's going to drive some of the adjustments that we're going to make with new materials? And that really is, is one of them, that we've generally differentiated reading groups largely by reading level. Like, how complex of a book can you handle? And that determined, right, sort of the, the guided reading group that you're in? And what we need to, to continue to do now, I'm not the reading person, so correct everything I say that's wrong, right? But, but what we need to continue to do is actually focus that small group instruction on skill proficiency, right? So let's put a group of students together that have the same either strength or gap in phonemic awareness, or, you know, or vocabulary, right? That's how we want to focus that small group instruction, not necessarily just on the same students, the students that can read the same level of text, right? Because that, that's that skill gap that you want to close, that, you know, again, that third grade is such a pivotal reading piece, that, that if a student has not learned how to read by third grade, then they, to, to your point, Dave, they're, they're behind in terms of how they're applying reading to every other discipline, right, that they're studying? How they're reading in social studies, reading in science, reading in math, reading, right? So, so that, we have to get kids at grade level, right, by third grade, in those foundational skills so that, you know, they're ready to, to apply, right? It ultimately, well, it's many years apart, I would tell you, like, our ability to do that by kids in third grade has a huge impact on, on the kids that end up taking an early college opportunity in high school, right? The kids that end up in the dual credit, in an AP, in a, you know, an advanced early college level course, bringing all the way back to, you know, they got to be on grade level by third grade, right, in order to open that whole sequence up to them, right, as they move through the system. Doesn't mean you can't catch them up, but, but that, that has to be the goal.
Yeah. So thank you for the, you know, explanation on this 30 to 84th percentile, because that was one of the questions. Do we, do you, you have the ability to chart it even further, like, you know, it seemed like it was pretty, it wasn't, the line you had at 50, you expect about one-third, two-thirds, seemed like kind of okay, but can you look at it, 30 to 40, 40 to 50, 50 to, yeah, you have that ability?
No, we can look at, we can pull a classroom, and the teacher can sort, and she'll see every student, he, she, or he'll see every student and exactly what that score is.
Do you think there's potential they would get a little more finite on that in the future, FastBridge? Like, why, why is there such, it just, that seems huge? Because to your point, 31, 31st percentile to 82nd percentile is two different.
Yeah, they're, they're, what they say to us is like, that's kind of, that's that idea of like access to grade-level learning, right? So they're saying, they're really coming at it from that MTSS lens and saying, if students sit in this range, you don't really need to provide them with another intervention. But we need to, as teachers, be very targeted on how they're learning on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, so you get those kids in the 30th up to the 40th, 50th.
And I can offer, I think, one thing that's important to, to that, is that I, I think if you get too finite, right? So there, there are, are systems that have raised pretty significant concern with the, what, what you have the potential to do if you get too finite, is then assume, well, I got to then tailor instruction right there, right? Like where the, the student is? And what can happen then is you lose sight of that learning acceleration piece. Meaning, what we ultimately want is third-grade students learning third-grade content. We don't want 20 third-grade students that are like sort of spread across this band, some learning upper second-grade level content, some learning early third-grade content. Like, we want them progressing, right, on, on grade level? And, and if you get too finite, districts that have, have used adaptive assessments have actually done damage long-term to student learning because it, if, if you're, you're two-zeroed in on where a kid is, you, you lose that learning progression, right? Like, you rob them of the opportunity to, to learn, perhaps just because there's a skill that they struggle with, right? Like, some kids really struggle with fractions, right? Like, they can't get fractions. Doesn't mean they can't attack higher-level problems just because they're losing a foundational element with fractions, and yet, if you remediate the heck out of fractions and never get, give them that complex math task, they're just going to stay in that learning space and they're not going to learn a year.
That's good. And coupled with the assessment tool that Dr. Salagi talked about, also gives confidence that those kids are being focused on. The last thing, question I had was just about the timing of the administration, right? Pretty quick from the fall testing in early September to the winter and December, and then we go a long time till the end, is that, I'm just curious about, about that timing? I guess specifically the winter testing, like, why it's so early, and is it to get it done before break, or?
Well, you have to remember, in this timeframe too, from winter to spring, we have our state testing.
Okay.
And we have our access testing for our multilingual learners, so that's a consideration in here. So that generally happens January, February, March time period.
Okay.
So we certainly wanted to have the information before winter break. Julia Zmikowski, who works for me, does a significant amount of work with data over that winter break time period.
Okay.
So that when our staff come back, we're able to equip and continue again on that cycle of making sure that we are evaluating the effectiveness of what we're doing.
And the growth monitoring, that chart is really based on fall to spring?
The growth, uh.
You know, the third, the third.
Fall to winter, fall to winter.
Yeah.
And then winter to spring.
Okay.
But then also fall to spring.
Which is really the most important one.
Exactly, that's the one we report out on our dashboard.
Okay.
But in between the administrations, we can look at.
No, that's helpful, I was just, just curious about the timing, because on paper it looks, when I'm just looking at this, it looks a little tight. All right, thank you very much.
Can I follow up on that? So the gaps in timing, like the gaps between the testing window is not standardized by FastBridge?
Yes, they give us a window, and so we worked within their window.
Okay, so.
They have a pretty large window, and we picked weeks within their larger window.
Okay, I see. So when they norm that data, is it based on?
That window of time.
But their, their window's pretty big, so do they further break it down to, like, you had a shorter period of time, so, or no?
No, they do not adjust it based on weeks of instruction in the comparison, but they do base it on taking it within that window that they set.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one more. So there was also a behavior component to the FastBridge, so that Sabers, is that reported on the dash, or not on the dashboard, is that reported on Synergy to the parents?
Yeah, we're working on that as well, to be, to go in the part of these sections as well, so that, because it's in the FastBridge suite, so we're working on that as well to be part of after our fall assessment window, which ends Friday. And then we'll do the same thing with the academic piece, and if I parents have an explanation about it, it's pretty impressive.
Okay, thank you.
So I know you said that, that fall assessment window ends Friday and then it'll be put up on Synergy. Do you know approximately, like, how long that will take?
Well, I, I hope it is within two or three weeks of that timeframe, but there's some technical pieces that I'm not an expert at, but what I can tell you is that myself, Melissa, our Department of Technology, our Detroit School Improvement, are all means to work through those kinks to make sure that it's up, and it's a fact that we don't have any kinks. So as soon as we can get the transfer in there and have the information up, we will. And my goal is to.
So this first time, it's our first time doing it, we're building that part of the system, but after that, we anticipate it being much wider.
And then, I'm wondering if you can describe a little bit more about the data, that information, or the, the information that parents will see? So is it just like the percentile your child is in for math and reading, or is it?
In the growth score.
Okay.
And then they'll also receive the percentile based on the individual test. So if we go back to the sections of the presentation where I explained, like, a third grader would take A reading, they would take the CBN reading, they would take the AMAP, and they would take the CBN automaticity, so they would have those four scores with the national percentile, and then they'd also, various times of the year, they'd have the growth, and then they'll also have the numbers.
And so the information that it targets about the learner, about here are some specific growth areas that they need to work on, is that information that parents have, or is it that something that, like, the teacher would be able to share with the parents?
That would be information the teacher would have.
Okay.
One more, I have one in our, Dave and I both attended the last CAC meeting, and in talking about the dashboard, a lot of questions came up about FastBridge, so will this presentation be available for parents to find? Because I feel like you answered a lot of the questions that came up. Is it, can, do they only need to visit the recording, or can they find this somewhere? Like, your presentation?
We'll fill up one of the slides into the more information.
And then, thank you. One last thing, is there, and this is more an assessment, general question, maybe not specific to FastBridge, but for those struggling readers who might be good at math, but the math catches them up in the, or the reading catches them up in the assessment, like, are those students encouraged to listen to the question? Like, how does that, how do you identify a student adept at math, but you're testing them in a, in a language-based assessment, right? Because I, I think that's been a struggle that, you know, I've heard and faced, and I, it's kind of a conundrum, is there a way for them to listen to the question?
It doesn't have that ability, no, it doesn't, it doesn't have that ability. But I think that's, again, where I would point to, the classroom assessments being really important as well. Maybe they, they might have some accommodations that allow them, students could have some accommodations.
Student-specific, okay, okay, thank you.
Really that same, there's that same level of challenge and fairness that exists when you look at IAR too, right? IAR is a very language-based assessment, like, it is a heavy writing-based assessment. And so if, if a, if a student has the ability to attack the problem, but really struggles with, you know, the evidence-based writing that has to accompany it, which, which candidly a lot of kids do, right? Like, that's a really complex skill, but that is sort of the depth of assessment of IAR.
Anybody else? Brian?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a, I asked along the way, and Dave asked a couple I had. So my, the one I saw on the front, on the, going way back to the beginning with the staffing, just because I know our coaches, interventional and interventionists, are we fully staffed across the district, or are there any staffing issues there?
We're fully staffed.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much.
We're fully staffed, they, you know, that, there's not an issue for this year, I mean, there's a, there's a fair number of those positions that we expanded and reintroduced with the support of the federal relief dollars. So I will take you back to one point of connection to Brian's, you know, forecast. We left those positions in your financial forecast when you looked out a couple of years, but that does mean, you know, we're going to have to continue to make pretty good strategic budgeting decisions in the years, because a lot of this work you just heard, that you're probably pretty excited about, and our community would be, is obviously contingent on being able to continue to provide that level of support, right? If we have to reduce staffing, right, we're going to, when you see the report card this year, what you'll see from last year is that actually our, our elementary class size went up a little bit, not, it, it was because of the last year's data was really low because of the pandemic year, when we only had 16 kids in a classroom, and we kind of went back to semi-normal. back to semi-normal class sizes, still lower than, than we'd been. But, but again, at some point, right, we're gonna, we're gonna struggle to maintain that and, uh, and some of our intervention staff unless we, we continue to make really good budget decisions, which we can do, but we just need to be cognizant of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna comment on that same thing. It seems, seems like, I'm overwhelmed by the mo, the observation that everything seems to be so data-driven. And I can imagine our teachers feeling the same way, and so, to the point about, you know, making investments in staffing for, you know, support staff, specialist coaches, super important, you know, in the future, and those are all budgeting decisions. And then the, the second piece, really, I guess, is even higher level, thirty thousand square, thirty thousand foot level. You know, you talked about the importance of third grade. And so, I reflect back on early childhood and all-day kindergarten programs, and how critical those are, especially coming out of the pandemic. Is that, is that something we should be focusing on, to try to encourage more all-day kindergarten, more cooperation with the preschools to help, help us prepare kids before they get to third grade, so that we're not doing a lot of MTSS?
Yeah. That's a fair question, Brad, and I think, um, I, I think that's a good topic for us collectively to look at at some point this year, right? At the one, before we answer that question, I'd love for, for Chris to be able to bring you an update. We have more kids in all-day kindergarten than we've ever had, like, that's, the percentage is gone.
Yeah.
That direction, which I think is a good thing. We've also, just recently, uh, I brought the Early Learning Collaborative back together, especially now that Mary Davis is in that role, but really pressed the accelerator on that coll, on that collaborative to say, we've got to refocus this group on kindergarten readiness as the metric, and understanding how we're actually moving that needle. And, and if the collaborative as it's currently structured isn't doing that, then we need to reconceptualize the collaborative and, because we're making an investment in that area for that express purpose, and, and we need to make sure we're getting value out of that. All good questions, maybe not for tonight, but I think both for future-
It wasn't really a question as much as a, as a comment, that while we focus on this, we can't lose sight of the fact that so much of what we get-
Yes.
We have to, you know, what we get is what we have to deal with. So, the more that we can focus on before they, we get them, complicated, as you said, by the pandemic.
Right, if you look actually at the, when you see it on the report card this year, actually, if you look at the Equity Journey Continuum, right, the, the new kind of report that, uh, ISB has out there, that is a place where we see a gap, right? Like, kindergarten readiness, when you look at kindergarten readiness broken down by demographic, there are some clear patterns in terms of where the, where kids come to the starting line, and, and that, that's, yes, something we need to, we've done a good job of really working hard, working with the collaborative to get students into all-day kindergarten that absolutely need to be in, in all-day kindergarten, but there are gaps coming in that area.
I guess, I guess the follow-up question might be, you know, every school district that I know of is trying to do all-day kindergarten, you know, and do we have restrictions just based on our buildings, based on staffing, about the number of kids we can absorb into all-day kindergarten?
And can I, um, can this assessment tool give us data to show, um, half-day kindergarten versus full-day kindergarten, and how they're performing, like, at first, second grade, if there is, uh, you know, if there is a difference that's demonstrated?
Yeah.
And along that, I had the other thought, it would be interesting to see further out the difference in scoring based on classroom size? Like, if you have, because, because it is specific to classrooms and you can pull classroom data, you can say a, a classroom that had eleven kids versus twenty-one kids, like, is there a difference in the scores, or is it irrelevant?
Yeah. Yes, and, and, uh, so, just kind of quick clarity, maybe necessarily, but the, the assessment will give us the data, the data warehouse will allow us to do all that analysis, right? So, ha, having the warehouse is where we're gonna be able to kind of pull those variables together to really analyze the test result as a result of whatever the factors are, full-day, half-day kindergarten, class size, those pieces. We, we will have the capacity, we should have the capacity to-
So, at your last meeting, you approved the new analytics tool. So, we're in the process of, um, working with the company and getting that up and off the ground.
Anything else before I go?
Okay.
Yep.
This was an awesome meeting. I love being in this room, just talking about this kind of stuff, no distractions. It's great.
Yeah, so, um, just real quickly, uh, thank you, Melissa. You know, I, I reflect back on, you know, almost thirty years ago, when, when I came to this district, and, um, I remember them saying, you know, "Okay, um, you don't have a reading program because we can't touch it, it's over there on the shelves," and, you know, you just, everybody kind of does their own, they're, kind of does their own thing, and same thing with math. And, you know, um, I sat on that first curriculum math committee that we finally started to put together, um, somewhat of a sequenced curriculum. And so, it's, I, I look at now how much time and effort in really digging into and purposeful learning, um, not that we weren't purposeful before, but this is really, has a lot behind it, and so, I, I definitely appreciate that. So, um, my question is not necessarily FastBridge, still assessment-related, um, we have this really rich amount of data that we're gathering for our K eight, but there's that high school piece that I always kind of think about. You know, not only are we thinking about that, that transition into high school, we've got a little bit of PSA, you know, SAT data, um, we really kind of look at that, that SAT, but there's a lot happening with kids emotionally, socially, academically. Is there anything we can be doing for those foundational areas so that we're not, like, all of a sudden, hmm, are we having, were kids falling through cracks? Are they, like, something that we can be doing at the high school? At the high school level?
So, at the high school level, we do actually utilize FastBridge with some average students.
Okay.
So, I, I do think that is, um, the benefit of having this system that goes through the high school level, so we do do that. Um, we also, um, utilize those assessments. This is part of the reason why we have that window before winter break, because Julie Osimkowski applies her magic and utilizes this information to be able to make course recommendations for our high schools. So, we have really good information about what kind of courses we should recommend for our students. But within our high school years, I mean, we have multiple data points that we're losing, so the first one being when they enter into our system, freshman on track, that's one of our most important pieces when they first enter in. And so, um, at this semester, we're monitoring their grades and making sure they're not at track, and we're intervening right then and there, and helping and supporting those students who are coming up as potential, need, um, some, you know, credit recovery. And then, um, you know, our students are taking the PSAT during those years, we have the SAT, but we also, um, have our AP dual-credit information. So, we do have lots of other data points, of course, course grades, too.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I was just curious, because this is, you know, we, we, we focus on, you know, this every year, this K eight piece, and then it's kind of like, what happens after that? You know, you know?
I'm trying to go over that. I did have that question too, and I didn't know if I was opening a can of worms, but I was like, I feel like it just, they tend to go, you know? So-
Yeah, so, okay. We've got these other pieces that they're-
Yeah, but I, I think, though, Chris, that, that transition though is, that, that is the system, right? Like, like, the system is, you get them to eighth grade, where you then launch students onto a pathway, and really, success in high school, it is very much about getting kids into the right path, and monitoring if they're successful in getting through that path, which really is about success in courses. And that-
I know, I think that's a great clarification.
Yeah, I don't think that there is a better metric, you know, at the high school. Obviously, the, the college entrance exam is one form of a, of a, sort of a, of a gate, right, into, you know, some institutions. But, but the reality is, you know, as, as I think Melissa kind of back mapped the, the whole experience, right? Like, I'm gonna oversimplify it, but it's a reality. Kids that have post-secondary beyond high school, right, data is gonna show their earning potential, their future opportunities significantly increased over a student that doesn't have any, right? Like, they end high school, don't do anything else, right? Their future's gonna look different than if they have, you know, post-secondary. So, what launches a kid into post-secondary? It's, it's a pathway, right, a designated pathway, an opportunity, success in high school, in your classes, one of the most research-linked, you know, e, elements, right, to, uh, to that, as well as those other kind of college-ready experiences, like participation in extracurricular service, work experience, right, all things that, that factor into it, right? So, so then, if you come all the way back down to the middle school, really, our goal by the time a kid finishes eighth grade is to make sure there is no opportunity that's not available to them at the high school based on their experience K eight, right? So, if you back map, some students that don't get through Algebra II, and, and high school students that don't hit those math readiness benchmarks, it's really all about where did they come out in eighth grade? And if we didn't put them on a path to be, you know, to, to have that entry point, and, and so then, you know, you backed it all the way down to Brad's question on kindergarten readiness, but, but that really is the reality. There is a, there's a marked difference between that, that transition point from eighth grade to, to high school where, so-
But we have, we have some points that we're, we're gathering there, that, that, it, it's not like they just have gone.
No.
Yeah.
So, you have your freshman on track.
Yeah.
You also are gonna have your PSAT to SAT growth.
Mm-hmm.
We finally have cohort data to do that, so we're gonna be able to record that out for the first time. As Dr. Schiller mentioned, then, we're monitoring who's getting early, um, access to early college course work as well. So-
Okay, thank you.
There are some markers along the way.
Yeah. Great meeting.
Last, just a little piece I just wanted to show you, and then I would stop. Uh, so, Melissa, go back up to elementary, um, just so you look at it. So, again, underneath, um, uh, let's do math. So, math achievement, uh, what's the second one over, two, five?
Yes, so it starts out, yes, two, five.
Perfect. So, would you click on the I under that one, the sixty-six percent? So, on your dashboard, right, this is one area where we have clearly set a challenge target in those areas, right? So, FastBridge, all the way up through, through middle school, we've set a twelve percent performance gain in each of, of those areas, which, uh, again, I, I, I don't know that there really is anything particularly magical about twelve percent, right? Like, but I think as we looked at this data collectively, right, it really should be about hopefully looking to see that we get that on-grade level performance up as close to eighty percent as we can. I'd love to tell you, we want to get it to a hundred percent, but, but realistically, that's like no child left behind, right? It's just not, you're not gonna get to a hundred percent, because we have students that we're going to need to continue to, uh, to support, but, but that's kind of where we anchored that, that twelve percent. But I think that, that sort of stretch goal is certainly something over the course of the next four years, we can come back and revisit, right? If we find ourselves really accelerating toward that target, maybe we ought to come back and, and relook at it. If we find ourselves struggling, we may need to be really honest about where and why we're struggling and, and how we do that. But I just, I wanted to point, uh, that out. I don't know that our board, the board ever, like, collectively formally said, like, we're gonna put the stamp on the, the twelve percent. We've just, we set that as a target to make it very, very clear that we want to see growth in both the reading and the math element.
Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to. Yep. So, um, we do have our delegate assembly, um, in here, this, we're gonna talk about this at our, we have the opportunity at our next meeting to talk about this. Susan, we're hoping that you will be our representative again, and, um, I know you, you really get into, uh, doing this, uh, doing this research. So, if for the next meeting, you can look at, um, and, and please read this, this kind of front section as well, um, because they did, um, change kind of their, uh, way of going about what they recommend and don't recommend, um, to this. So, if you could, um, maybe look at this before the October meeting, we'll have some opportunity to talk through, um, probably looking at the ones that, um, we go against what the resolution committee is, is saying. I believe we, we kind of did that last time as well. We would also be able to, if we need more further information, can have the, the November meeting as well, um, to be able to talk about it again, so, um- Go ahead.
So, there's three new ones and four amended ones?
Yes, three new ones and four amended ones that they are, um, going to be talking about at the meeting, if I'm understanding-
They really changed it a lot this year.
Yeah, they totally changed, totally changed it.
I would read the, the, um, I'm just gonna say this because I'm so excited about it, the, you read the constitutional amendments too, because they changed that it's two-thirds majority vote now, which is a big deal. And yes, I emailed Jim Broman and let him know. So, because that was his thing. But, um, yeah, it's much shorter, and they, there are just some different things that they've really changed, and so, I think that's, it's gonna go faster, but it, it's interesting what they did.
So, the two-thirds, another piece that makes that really important is, um, and I, and, um, I know Brad had started the, the group, but, um, the large unit district presidents do meet regularly, and meet, we've had multiple meetings with Tom Bertrand specifically on that idea that, you know, a very small number of districts have the majority of students in the state, but we're one vote versus a district that could have two-hundred-and-fifty students. And so, that two-thirds is an important piece, so that we're not having a very small voice, really, that is, um, that's dictating. So, yes, so there are three that we're gonna be, um, that they're gonna be bringing for more discussion, and then there are, um, amending existing, amending existing.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for, go ahead. So, we're gonna talk about both the new and the amended, correct?
Those ones that, like, we'll do, like, we kind of did, I think, did last time, we'll do a poll of what do, are there people who disagree with the stance that IASB is taking?
Yeah.
Because to go through each one of them, we could get, go down a rabbit hole for a long period of time.
If you look at the very back of the past, this is what, um, I will need to know going into the delegate assembly, how we are going to vote on each of those things. So, that's what you need to look at. Um, and the other stuff is, you know, you don't, because there's like a new sec, not everyone's new, but of, like, they're just, they're not presenting it, but they were submitted. So, just so you know, you don't, we're not doing anything with those, so you don't have to, you can read it for your leisure, but-
They're ignoring it, and so can we?
Yes, kind of nicely say, so-
They, they made a lot of changes in there, like, the number of times somebody can bring the same thing back again, the number of times that a district can put, like, the number of, um, resolutions a district can put out there. There's a lot of changes that they made to, um, to this as well. So, before that next, probably, October meeting, um, or we can do it at that meeting, since there's only really a small number, we'll just do a quick, which ones do we want to talk about? Okay, we do not have any public comment, I do not need to, uh, read that, so there being no further action, come before the board and open session. I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Falsen. All those in favor say aye.
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 To the host, meeting is adjourned. Opposed, meeting is adjourned.